Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. Of the meeting announcements, all council meetings will be livestreamed on the city website and on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Kelsmith, President, seven members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, please be seated. Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
It's a move.
It's your second. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Agenda is amended. And our next order of business is proclamations, and I have one to for Take Your Father to School. And Councilman Kraus, you have one. Do you want to be presented?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, let's do yours, because ours is going to take a little bit longer.
Are you sure?
Positive. Give the guys a little bit more time off.
Come on up. Morning. Hi, good morning. Do you want me to read it? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Can I? I'm not sure if you can or not. Good morning, everybody. Welcome. We have, we have a recognition of the organization Pittsburgh Action Against Rape, which is now celebrating 50 years this year, if I'm not mistaken. Correct? Yes. So with that, I'll proceed with the, with our proclamation. So whereas Pittsburgh Action Against Rape is celebrating 50 years of pursuing their vision to create a place of hope and healing for all victims of sexual violence during the month of April, which has been dedicated to promoting Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And whereas PAR has expanded their services to provide advocacy to children who are victims of sexual assault and integrated itself into the program Coaching Boys Into Men, dedicated to ending violence towards women, and by creating Project Traffic Stop, now named Project Rise, which has created a drop-in center for commercially, sexually exploited victims within Allegheny County to seek out services and to reclaim their lives. And whereas Pittsburgh Action Against Rape has founded by a group of lawyers, health professionals, and activists who believed the victims of sexual assault should have expert assistance directly following the commission of the crime in response to the rapes which occurred during the celebration of the Pittsburgh Pirates' win over the Baltimore Orioles in the 1971 World Series. And whereas Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Action Against Rape was, has created the legacy of being the only organization in Allegheny County solely devoted to the issue of sexual violence and became the catalyst for the Pennsylvania state legislator to pass the first law in the nation recognizing total confidentiality in communications between victims of rape crisis counselors known as the Rape Shield Law. And whereas Pittsburgh Action Against Rape has now been expanded beyond the geographical boundaries of the city of Pittsburgh and has added the option to seek aid remotely through their use of telehealth, increasing its scope of range to help survivors. And so now therefore be it resolved that this council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Pittsburgh Action Against Rape for its commitment to prevention services for victims of sexual assault of all ages and congratulates PAR for 50 years of remarkable and impactful service to the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that this council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 to be Pittsburgh Action Against Rape Day here in the city of Pittsburgh. May I please have a motion?
I have a motion and then a second, please. Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation to approve.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is Lisa Perry. I'm the Executive Director of PAR. I'm joined today by my amazing staff and board. I want to thank Councilman Kraus and Councilman O'Connor for this opportunity to speak to you today and to receive this amazing proclamation. It's such a critical moment in our history and also in the future going forward. As we learn today, we are 50 years old this year. We would hope that our work was not necessary, but it is in the city and it is in our entire country and our world. And so what we hope today means for us and for everybody that's here today and listening is that we are all sort of digging in to be more committed to eradicating sexual violence in our communities. One of our goals this year, our strategic priorities, is to extend our reach to make sure that PAR is a place of hope and healing for everyone. And we know that in our marginalized communities in the city of Pittsburgh, there's a great need for us to do this work even more. And so I ask that you join us today, all of you who are in earshot of my voice, to, to make a commitment to ending sexual violence in our community. We've been doing this for 50 years, and until we eradicate sexual violence in our communities and in our lives, we will remain here and we hope that you will join us. So thank you so much for this day and we appreciate you. Stay blessed.
Okay, will the guys please come back up? Will the guys please come back up? Reverend? Everyone. Councilwoman Strasburg, everyone come back up. Fathers in school, guys, please come forward. Sheikens, come forward. Please. Mark Brently, come up here by me.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Come here, Reverend. Reverend, please, come by me. I got you. Yes, yes. How are you? How are you, honey? Last time I saw you, you were little. Mom! Son! How are you?
Keep on coming. Come on, guys, come on.
How are you? Good to see you. How are you?
Yeah. There, you're smiling.
I'm good. I'm good. A lot of guys here.
I think I got pushed in, right?
Good. Good. I want Mark here, because he started this.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Is the superintendent here? Is that him? I can't tell with his mask. Oh, yeah, his deceased bow tie. Superintendent, come up here. Okay. Can we let the superintendent come forward? I just want to begin, before I read the proclamation, just to say a little bit about this program. Mark Brently, I've met Mark Brently years ago when he first started this program, and one of my first jobs with Pittsburgh Public Schools was to assist him, and his passion and drive were unparalleled. I mean, he just felt so committed to this cause. And I didn't always understand it. I tried to get him to change it to Special Person Day, Special People Day, especially, he was not changing it. And I, now I understand. And if you see what happened this weekend, how many kids injured in violent crime and some of the things that happen, have been happening across our city. If you don't think that there's a need for male role models and fathers in this city, whether it's your children or somebody else's children, it's time for everyone to step up together, whether you're male, female, whether you have children, don't have children. This is all of our problem, and it's time for all of us to step up. So thank you for setting the pace at the beginning, and now we're here to join you and hope that we can make some changes in our children's lives.
Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you. So here with the proclamation. Whereas, May 20th, 2022, has been designated as the 24th Annual Take Your Father to School Day in the Pittsburgh Public School District. And whereas, created by former school board member Mark Brently Sr., the mission of the, of this annual event is to increase active participation of fathers, father figures, and positive male role models within the schools, in hopes that they would become more involved in the child's life, child's education, all children's education. And whereas, for the purpose of highlighting the, the inclusive nature of this event, a father can be any positive male role model, including but not limited to a child's grandfather, cousin, uncle, other sibling, community leader, minister, or others. And whereas, when fathers are involved in their child's education, research shows that student grades and test scores improve, attendance increases, students get more involved in the school activities. And I'm going to add one is when I was, worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools, it was parent community engagement, and one of the things we tracked was the decrease in, in corrections from this, from the, from the school district, less kids were getting in trouble. Whereas, students have also shown that when a father is actively involved with their child, it can help increase students' emotional intelligence and problem-solving capabilities, which enables healthier behaviors. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the Take Your Father to School Day event and the volunteers and participants who continuously commit themselves to the education and development of our city's children. And be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, May 20th, 2022 to be Take Your Father to School Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Okay. And we have Director Pollock from the mayor's office, who also would like to present a proclamation from the mayor's office.
Thank you, Madam President and members of council. On behalf of Mayor Ed Gagne, who unfortunately could not be here today, I would like to read the following proclamation. Whereas, Friday, May 20th, 2022, has been designated as the 24th Annual Take Your Father to School Day in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. And whereas, since its inception in 1999 by founder Mark Brently Sr., the goal of the event is to increase and promote male involvement in schools. The day brings fathers and male role models into the schools to establish better communication with schools, explore opportunities for volunteering, and encourage men to take a proactive role in their children's education. And whereas, during Take Your Father to School Day, fathers, father figures, positive male role models from across the city of Pittsburgh will visit their children's school, meet teachers and staff, and participate in organized fun activities. And whereas, this year's theme is the power of partnership, promoting PPS 412 readers, reading one book to two students. And whereas, it is important to include positive male role models in the definition of father for the purpose of highlighting the inclusive nature of this event. This year, for the first time in three years, in-person activities are available for fathers, father role models, and families to have fun with their students. And whereas, Pittsburgh Public Schools would like to acknowledge the partnership of the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, Literary, Literary, Literacy Pittsburgh, excuse me, the Pittsburgh Penguins, Pittsburgh Pirates, Pittsburgh Steelers, the Take Your Father to School Day Committee, which includes Mark Brently Sr., Michael Nichols, Brendan Phillips, Mark Roderickus, Henry Struthers, Dwayne Barker, Brother Melvin Hubbard L., and a variety of organizations that have continued to support the success of the Take Your Father to School Day initiative. Therefore, Mayor Ed Gagne does hereby proclaim Friday, May 20th, 2020, as Take Your Father to School Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. You want to say a few words?
If I could, just on behalf of the mayor, who I, again, could unfortunately not be here today, just want to thank you all for this important initiative. As you all know, Mayor Gagne is a father of three, including two current PPS students, and Mrs. Gagne is here with us today as well. I just wanted to acknowledge her. And I also know personally that is a father of one who's not yet school age, but who will soon be a PPS student. I want to thank you for everything that you're doing to show positive male role models and positive male involvement in, in the lives of the school-aged children, which is absolutely critical to the success of our city. So thank you all.
Before I turn it over to Mark Brently, are there any members of City Council that like to make a comment? I can't see. No one sees. Reverend Grayson's a little bit taller than I, so he's telling me, no, nobody can see, nobody wants. As far as I can see, everybody wants to talk. Anyway, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Brently. And Mark Brently, thank you very much for all that you have done for the city of Pittsburgh for all these years, not only for this initiative, but several others. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President and members of council. But we just have a couple of quick presentations, if you'll just bear with us. But before we do this, let me just first say to those who are on social media who will be seeing this or seeing this now, first, let me say, don't we look good? And the reason why we look good and we are organized is that let me also make an apology. For the last two weeks, I have been blowing up this young lady's phone over there. And every time, the district gives us a contact person that would do everything for us. And so what I'm asking for you guys to do before we go through this, in your male deep voice, we're going to say this. Thank you, Mercedes Howes. And then we're going to clap once. All ready? In your male deep voice on the count of three. One, two, three. Thank you, Mercedes Howes. Okay. Secondly, and you're saying male deep voice, we're going to say, get well soon, Mayor Gagne. All right? Because he's watching. You know he's watching. He's Pittsburgh through and through. Okay? On the count of three. One, two, three. Get well soon, Mayor Gagne. That's excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Now, let me bring up our superintendent, Dr. Walters. Before he speaks, let me say also that when we first started, we've had administrators who stuck with us, stuck with us from day one. And this is a man that's been responsible for a little bit of everything. He is also the person, when we went to him and said, hey, we're going to go to city council, but we want to say it in words, our pledge to children, and our pledge to each other, and our pledge to families. Can you put something together that we can say? That was about 15 years ago? And that's the litany we are reading today. So we're thankful and we're honored to have him here and to introduce him as the superintendent of Pittsburgh Public Schools, Dr. Wayne Walters.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I first want to thank Council President Theresa Cale Smith and the City Council for continuing to recognize Take Your Father to School Day. I want to thank our very own Pittsburgh Public Schools' father, Mayor Gagne, and his office for this opportunity to spread the good news about male involvement in schools, even through his own participation in this momentous event throughout the years. I would also like to acknowledge members of my leadership cabinet who are with us today. Dr. Ted Dwyer, Mr. Mark Stuckey.
Raise your hand when we, so we can see.
Dr. Ted Dwyer, Mr. Mark Stuckey, Mr. Michael McNamara. Mrs. Williams, Howes Williams, Mrs. Fabry Jones, and Mr. Kevin Bivins, Assistant Superintendent. None of this would be possible without the innovative and creative thinking of Take Your Father to School Day founder, Mark Brently Sr. You see these Ben here today as a testament to his work and the collaborative efforts of the Take Your Father to School Day Committee. And so thank you to those members of the committee, Brother Eel, Mr. Barker, Mr. Struthers, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Nichols, Mr. Davis, Mr. Roderickus, and Mark Brently Jr. This year's theme is power through partnerships. It is only fitting to mention that this work cannot happen without allies like the city council, the mayor, and community partners like the Steelers, Pirates, Penguins, Carnegie Library, and the Literacy Pittsburgh. We must continue to work together to not only provide a warm, welcoming school environment to promote parent engagement with fathers, but also build bridges, hold healthy and sometimes difficult conversations, and make the best decision for the safety and learning of all of our students. We know that a positive teaching and learning environment, academic success, and school climate begins at home. A father or positive male role model often serves as a child's first teacher. We appreciate and recognize the power of men in schools, and we look forward to celebrating the 24th, the 24th, the 24th Annual Take Your Father to School Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Walters. Also, we want to make sure that we recognize, and yes, we're proud to stick our chest out. In 2012, this city was recognized as the first-place winner in the National School Board Association in terms of innovative ways of getting men active and involved. So that simply means we are the lead city. Okay? Everybody else you see doing fathers are following us. Okay? And we're happy about that. We do have one of our partners here, and I'm going to ask my partners, my friends at the Carnegie Library, if you would come over and share a few words with us, please. While he's coming over, one of the themes we're also working on this year is because this pandemic didn't just hurt the Pittsburgh Public Schools. Don't let nobody tell you that. It hurts all students across this country. But what we're doing to support our students, it's called the Pittsburgh Public Schools Readers. That simply means, starting next month, we're taking, we're asking you to take four months, the next four months, take one book and read to two kids. That's not hard to do. Okay? And we're going to help to get our students back to where we are. Partner Carnegie, please say some words.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. My name is Dan, and I am a librarian, and I'm here on behalf of Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh. But more importantly, more relevantly to this, I'm also proud PPS dad.
Yes.
And so I wanted to take this opportunity. I know I'm supposed to talk about the library and the partnership, but I actually want to give you a little tip, dad to dad. An important part of being, we all know being in the lives of young people is spending time with them, right? And I think we've all found that, especially recently, anytime you leave the house for a fun afternoon, it seems like your wallet is empty when you get home, right? So I have, you have a little ace up your sleeve if you have a library card in your pocket. I want to encourage you all. I have two requests. One, check your pocket. Make sure you have a library card from the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh. Got it? Two, next time you see any young person who you care about, ask them if they have a library card. So we all know about the books, and you're going to need four books. I think we've all given Amazon enough of our money in the last couple of years. So check them out from the library, please, and talk to the librarians there to get recommendations about books that the young people in your life and you can connect over that reflect your own experiences and your shared values. But what's more than that is it's actually a fun afternoon out to come. So we have 17 neighborhood libraries, the main library in Oakland, plus the library for accessible media for Pennsylvanians on, on Baum Boulevard. If you ask, we can actually give you a little booklet with, it'll give you a passport, so you can go check out all the libraries and check them off. But on top of that, we have homework help, eBooks. You can check out comics and read them on your tablet. You can check out video games. And we have a new service called the Rad Pass, where you can log in with your library card, get free or very reduced cost tickets to theater, museums, and things like that. All of that in service of getting you out in the community, having a nice day out and spending time with the young people who you really care about. So finally, acknowledging that, like, where everywhere else barriers exist, and that we're committed to reducing barriers. And there's a lot of work to be done, but we've made a big step in that in the last couple of units. You may have heard, we've eliminated overdue fines. So if you check out a book, if you've been worried about fines or anything like that, nothing to worry about. Fines have been cleared off, and those young people can check out books. As long as the books eventually come back, there's no problem. So with that, thank you very much for everything you do, dads and special adults, and thank you for including me.
Thank you, Dan, for being a partner. Thank you. And what we want to do, we have a few more quick, quick announcements. And while we're getting ready for that, the three folks are going to be saying a few things from our committee. Mark Sr., Mark Jr., if you can make your way over here, Brother Melvin L., and then Brother Dwayne Barker. We're going to, if you can start moving forward. And Mel's going to take us through the, oh, you got a microphone. You're going to just work from there. Okay. He's going to take us through the litany and some other acknowledgements he needs to make, and the others have something to say. And after that, we're going to do the Pittsburgh Chair, and then we're, we're going to be finished. We're going to be downstairs to fellowship with men and talk about the importance of committing ourselves to, to our children in this city, and of course, share our box lunch. Brother Mel.
Thank you, Brother Mark. How you feel? We got to go back to Western. How you feel? Fired up? One more time. How you feel? Hey, hey, Dan, I'm going to say, anybody have their card? Put it out here. Let, let them know that we here in this, this building, City Council, have our library cards. Mine is right here. Anybody else got one? All right, your wallet. Just want to make sure, just checking. All right, Brother Neil. We're in good shape. Let you know we carried them, all right? Also, you talk about the fatherhood movement in Western Pennsylvania, which Take Your Father School Day is certainly a part of it, a large part of it. But before the Take Your Father School Day started, this started back in the 1980s. And next week, we're going to be acknowledging those individuals who were founders of this movement in Western Pennsylvania. We have two of them here today. I'd like to say and recognize Brother George Fleming. Raise your hand, George. Give him a hand now. And unfortunately, or fortunately, how you look at it, I'm the second one here. All right. We're going to go into our litany. Is that all right, Brother Mark?
Yes, sir. You run it. You take it.
Now, we have several folks who are going to help this out, and we're going to have them line up and come up and read certain portions of this. One lets you know where it says members is where all of us, so I'm going to say members. Don't read it, and you read it after them. All right? Y'all got that?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll see. And then we, then we get down to, on the second page where it says unison, I'll come back up and we'll all say that part together in unison. And also, another recognition that I have on my paper, I have to say, we have before today, is a young man who I'm very proud of, and a lot may be proud of this young man, who now is our state representative for, for the 24th Latin State District at this time, State Rep. Martell Covington's with us today. I forgot, Martell. I didn't forget, brother. Anyhow, we're going to have Josiah Gilliam come up. And I'll call your name up. You're going to line up right next to Josiah, going this way. And then when Josiah's done, next person will come up. We have Rick. Rick coming up. He has children in Kappa. Rick coming up, he has children in Kappa and P O L, and also John Bowie. Julius Boltwright, going to come down. And after Julius, we have Adam. And after Adam is Daniel. And then my personal favorite, Brother Sloan, Luke, going to come down, please. Only because I had Brother Sloan when he was in sixth grade at Arsenal. I ain't that right, Brother Sloan. So we're going to have Josiah come up and get started. Thank you, brother.
Thank you, Brother Eel, it's an honor to be with you guys. Litany of Commitment, written by Dr. Wayne Walters, Interim Superintendent of Pittsburgh Public Schools. "We dedicate the 2022 Take A Father to School Day to the involvement of fathers and father figures in the education of their children and to the collaborative support of educators and other stakeholders."
"We rejoice that fathers and father figures, students, educators, and supporters are assembled under the banner of the Pittsburgh Public Schools Take A Father to School Day. We ask for guidance as we grow in our development concerning the importance and impact of fathers and father figures and our need to embrace relationships and resources for the benefit of our schoolchildren we love and cherish dearly."
"To the honor of the community and to all of those who share responsibilities in raising our youth, to the administrators, teachers, parents, and community leaders who are responsible for the quality of education for our children."
"We dedicate the 2022 Take A Father to School Day."
"To overcome the low levels of performance and the need for us to visualize, actualize, internalize, conceptualize, and realize that we are a critical piece in a child's physical, social, emotional, artistic, and cognitive development."
"We raise our collective voices with a sense of urgency to say, feel, believe, and show that we are here, we are proud, and we are committed."
"To call for new and extended independent initiatives in education where fathers and father figures can be regularly seen, heard, and represented throughout the educational experience."
"We pledge our commitment as fathers and father figures to do what is necessary for ourselves, our children, our future as we understand that some things we must ourselves."
Last part here, let's go, "we."
"We, the benefactors of many who shed blood and light, we used to bring this to this point. We are grateful for this opportunity. We dedicate ourselves to our children and future by continually serving as positive representatives of fathers and father figures in Pittsburgh." "We acknowledge that our presence and prescience is eternal for our children and pledge to continually make a difference in the life of a child."
Beautiful, thank you. Thank you, Brother Mel. Thank you. Mark, you want to acknowledge some folks that are?
Good morning. The Take Your Father School Day Committee would like to acknowledge some of our partners.
Please raise your hand when you commit to the.
This is just some of them: Carnegie Library, Pittsburgh Steelers, Pittsburgh Penguins, Pittsburgh Pirates, Tony the Emoji, Care's Reach, Pittsburgh Public Schools, Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Literacy Pittsburgh, and GVI Outreach. Thank you.
Brother Duane.
All right, I'm going to try to be fast, but I want a little bit more interaction. So I am here recognizing the educational partners that we have. We know for a fact that Pittsburgh Public Schools was a flagship and has supported Take A Father to School Day for 24 years. But we want to recognize that we have men that are here from private schools, parochial schools, and charter schools that are standing up for their children as well. Because at the end of the day, we all share the responsibility of our students, we share the responsibility of our families, and we share the responsibility of our communities. So with that being said, I'm going to say some things, I'm going to say some schools. And if this is a school that is representative, that you represent, please say, raise your hand and say, "I am," okay? Pittsburgh Public Schools.
I am.
All right. Gateway.
I am.
All right. Propel. Steel Valley. Manchester Academic Charter School. And then we also got a couple of universities. We got some folks representing Pitt. Duquesne. Drexel. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Brother Duane. Finally, before we do our Pittsburgh Fathers' Chair, we do want to give a moment to, I think it's Tony Emoji. Tony, you have, Mr. Emoji, where you at? I know, okay. Close. All right, we got 30 seconds, Mr. Emoji.
I don't know why everybody's giggling so much, but, you know, I did this at the Monroe Grill Mall in Pittsburgh Golden Gloves last week. And when a kid comes up and hugs my knee and said, "I love you, Mr. Emoji," I get tears. And I got a watch that I've been showing people, handing out the pins. I want to dedicate myself to the mayor's office, whatever they want me to do. Get on school busters, go to the schools, whatever they want me to do. Because my watch is what I want to symbol in this Pittsburgh city. The violence got to stop, and everybody saw my watch. It's a smiley watch. It's time to smile in the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And we cannot other acknowledge, Mr. McBane, do you still hear? Did you want to say? Yes, it's. All righty, thank you, folks. We're thankful to City Council for this event. We're going to end this way, guys, in the fist of determination with your left hand. When I say Pittsburgh, you say fathers, and you put it in the air, all right? And you get louder each and every time. Pittsburgh!
Father!
Pittsburgh!
Father!
Pittsburgh! Father! Thank you, Council. Thank you. Gentlemen, we're going to go downstairs for your lunches, downstairs for your lunches. And if you can, please help out in the hallway if they need any help there.
Bruce, can I help you? You're out of order, sir. You're out of order. Mr. Kraus, can you have a seat? Kraus, you're out of order.
He's like my son, okay? Okay?
I just got some prostate cancer. See what says on the back? Off the balance of wisdom, with the sunshine and all the comforts, we all walk.
Give me a few minutes to clear out, and then we'll be continuing.
Thing, you don't have any problems. You're on board with loving kindness. Not look at this as being, you don't look at this as being black and white, you look at this as being right and wrong. For all his kids, he knows this by name. Come on now. I want you to be at this event, and we're going to share with all the healthcare workers. There's a queue here, he rose. When you can operate on somebody, then you know they committed murder.
Our next order of business is public comment.
No doubt.
I remember doctors doing all that stuff. With doctors and all. Hey, come to this, pregnant. Take care.
Thank you, everyone. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May I have the first speaker, please, and that's Naomi Mullen, who is joining us via Zoom. Naomi Mullen.
Good morning, Theresa.
Good morning, Naomi.
Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. When I started the community reading program at Bon Air Elementary, there were male role model volunteers, such as Dan, who spoke earlier, the librarian. The librarians are a wonderful resource for guiding you toward books that everyone can enjoy. Michael Mullen, who read a book about a slave who was able to read. Mitchell Schwartz of Smart Solution, alas, the school soon closed. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we the people. Decisions and actions that harm people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Bon Air. That is not advisable. Mayor Ganey, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham have all pledged to help Bon Air get rid of our detrimental school property and replace it with a green space. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space will be beneficial to all ages and stages of people, a beautiful calming place to enjoy fruit trees, flowers, and birds. Will the rest of City Council promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air neighborhood? We, the property owners, say no to anything other than a green space to replace the once valuable asset of the school that was closed against our will. Reapportionment is thoroughly rejected by we, the people of Bon Air. There is no benefit to us. The answer is no. The Michael Mullen Green Space, the partial reparation for the injuries we have endured. Shady trees, shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. And our next speaker is Linda Vacca.
Hi, my name is Linda Vacca. Except for about 15 years, I have resided in Bloomfield all of my life, returning here about seven years ago. My main concern is a public safety issue. I'm speaking on behalf of dozens of parishioners of St. Marie Agretti Parish in Bloomfield regarding the bishop's recent decision to leave St. Joseph Church open and to conduct major renovations while the building remains in use. We are extremely concerned about this choice and the ignorance of the diocese with respect to the numerous physical and environmental issues of that building. The diocese denies any safety or health risks with the building. Can they be trusted to make this determination? Just last week, parishioners had to bring to the attention of diocesan staff a dangling piece of copper on the roof before it was fixed. Also last week, the fire marshal advised that the building was unlawfully padlocked, preventing people from being able to exit its two main doors from inside. Unlawful padlocks were also found on at least two doors of the Macklin Conception Church. These are the same people saying, "Trust us, it's safe." We are requesting immediate assistance from District 7 Councilwoman and City Council at Large to make the issue of the St. Joseph Church building a priority to ensure the safety of the Bloomfield community. Before any construction began, the diocese must be required to test for asbestos and other contaminants, and any construction project must be closely monitored with the safety of the community a priority. We are requesting that all furnace, occupancy, building, and health department inspections be reviewed or conducted immediately if outdated. I've attached an appendix outlining very specific public health and safety concerns. My second concern is affordable housing for seniors in Bloomfield. Most Bloomfield seniors struggle to navigate and afford the third, three- and four-story row houses. Bloomfield has been cheated out of affordable senior housing several times over the last 30 years. When is it Bloomfield's turn for affordable senior housing? I generally support bringing tangible benefits to Bloomfield's sizable senior community and in particular, affordable housing for Bloomfield seniors, most of whom are lifelong Pittsburgh residents. It's extremely concerning to consider the likelihood that in repurposing both of Bloomfield's Catholic churches, the diocese will eventually follow the money and hand over to the wrecking crew our beloved places of worship. And by this, I mean large-scale development of luxury condos, shopping centers, and the sprawl of mega hospitals. Pittsburgh should do right by its seniors in Bloomfield, who would make their voices heard when it counts. I'm grateful to City Council for taking the time to hear my voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is John Rhodes. John Rhodes? No, no one. Christina Howell. Christina Howell? Our next registered speaker is Christina Howell.
Yes, I'm here.
Good morning.
Hello.
Please state your neighborhood for the record.
Yes, Christina Howell from Bloomfield. I'm the Executive Director of Bloomfield Development Corporation, a registered community organization in the neighborhood of Bloomfield, and I'm also a resident of the neighborhood. BDC's mission is to build a thriving, diverse community through equitable engagement, and our vision is a Bloomfield where everyone can build a home, a business, and a future. While the East End is in high development demand now, and for the last 10 years, it wasn't always that way. In 2018, BDC, in response to increasing development in Bloomfield and demand for our land and houses, convened the Gateway Community Planning Process where residents and stakeholders overwhelmingly identified affordable housing as a priority for the sure, safe site. Then in 2019, BDC undertook a housing survey to understand the of-the-moment situations of residents regarding housing, which resulted in our seven-year Affordable Housing Strategy and Work Plan. Roughly 57% of respondents of that survey reported spending. Roughly 57% of respondents of that survey reported spending more than 30% of their income on housing. During those workshops and meetings, we have met with overwhelming support to create more affordable housing. Inclusionary zoning is one of the tools in our affordability toolbox. While 10% of units in one development is a tiny drop in the bucket of need, and we would support a higher percentage as well as a lower AMI threshold for renters, the current inclusionary zoning legislation proposed for Bloomfield and Polish Hill is an excellent start. BDC is currently requesting of developers to provide a higher number of affordable units and that housing developers accept housing choice vouchers. But we appreciate having this legislation, that having this legislation in place will strengthen our bargaining position with those developers. When we talk about inclusionary zoning publicly outside of Bloomfield and even within the neighborhood, as previous testimony on other dates demonstrates, BDC hears the refrain that there is not a lot of open land for developments of 20 or more units. However, developers have been assembling parcels constantly and quietly, such as in the case of the long-proposed hotel on Penn Avenue near Children's Hospital. We do have a few large sites, such as the parking lot where the Bloomfield Saturday Market is currently held. And as the previous testimony demonstrates, there may be other large parcels available in the coming years. Additionally, much of the Baum Center corridor is also included in Bloomfield's boundaries, and we've all seen the development booming in that area. So I am here to support inclusionary zoning being expanded from Lawrenceville into Bloomfield and Polish Hill. I also want to take the moment to request for a staff person in the city planning to monitor and track inclusionary zoning. It is badly needed. That way, we can then show and have the data that it is working and tweak as necessary that legislation. I also want to echo that we have not been contacted by the.
Thank you. And Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Sover, downtown Frankfurt, Kentucky, Helsinki, Finland. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for the Presidency 2024. Vote by voter verification and signature verification on nomination papers are central to our democracy. There is nothing more important to me than these two connected issues. I'm willing to almost literally lay down my life in relationship to the importance of these issues. April 2022 is European Intelligence Month. I and GIS have a link with Helsinki, Finland. Finland is sixth in the world in Forbes' estimate of national IQ. 15 for the United States. And Finland is first in Europe in housing. A concern of this council is the Inclusionary Zoning, IZ, and Affordable Housing, AH, Nexus. 13 and 15 April 2022. I emailed Ms. Gross, District Seven, an IZAH advocate. Some questions. Please define what you mean by inclusionary, especially with regard to housing. Does inclusionary housing produce any exclusionary outcomes? What mathematical representation can you offer between unequal housing instances in Lawrenceville and compensatory equality monetary course to vector a specific positive annual equity outcome? Want the GIS Lawrenceville Housing Database? How does the approach of Pittsburgh Council on IZAH differ from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and Austin, Texas? Very different approaches. No reply from Ms. Gross or any other counselor who received copies of these emails. Overall, I oppose the IZAH U.S. version because I view it as an anti-equality form of discrimination. I oppose the public sector, Pittsburgh and any other local council across the United States, imposing on the private sector what to do with its property or housing. I oppose subordination in housing of the ideal of equality in competitiveness that may produce inequalities based on individual achievement over an ideology of equity that is based on a descriptive, intersectionalist bias for anyone, which here seems to be the materially poor and non-white Pittsburghers. I support the dissolution of the existing housing authority, which I think is a bloated bureaucracy that serves the people of Pittsburgh. And I think we should use, the Pittsburgh Council should use a mathematically grounded form of analysis.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Sam Spearing. Sam Spearing.
Hi there. My name is Sam Spearing, and I work as the Housing and Mobility Coordinator for Bloomfield Development Corporation. And I'm also a resident of Bloomfield as a renter on Pearl Street. I want to quickly apologize because there's construction outside, so you might be able to hear that. And I also wanted to quickly thank Pittsburgh Action Against Rape and all of the fathers and father figures for all of their work and service of our communities, as recognized earlier. But I'm here today to speak in support of the expansion of inclusionary zoning to Bloomfield and Polish Hill. Thanks to Councilwoman Gross and great partners like Lawrenceville United and Lawrenceville Corporation, we've seen the success of inclusionary zoning in Lawrenceville, and we want to replicate this tool for Bloomfield as well. We know that according to data collected by the Planning Department, roughly 41% of renters in Bloomfield are cost burden, which is more than double the citywide rate of approximately 20%. City Planning also has a Displacement Vulnerability Index created using data on income, education, race, and renter status to analyze risk of displacement. And the Vulnerability Index showed that out of five census tracts in Bloomfield, two were classified as vulnerable and one as somewhat vulnerable. Many of the amenities that are driving new development, higher housing costs, and increased desirability in Bloomfield's housing market demonstrate the advantage of creating new affordable units. Bloomfield is walkable, bikeable, and well-served by public transportation. Grocery stores, farmers markets, and healthcare facilities are all easily accessible from Bloomfield. Locating new quality affordable units in neighborhoods like Bloomfield is essential to allow low-income renters access to the same opportunities as everyone else. I also want to acknowledge two of the biggest questions we heard during multiple public meetings about inclusionary zoning. The first question was, why only 10%, demonstrating a consistent desire for more ambitious affordable housing goals in the city? And the second question we heard several times was, why not do this in other neighborhoods or in my neighborhood? And to that end, we'd like to encourage further expansion of inclusionary zoning as neighborhoods request it. Our neighborhood and neighbors need tools that create new affordable housing units in Bloomfield. I'm strongly in support of expanding inclusionary zoning to Bloomfield and Polish Hill and beyond. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Lizzie Anderson. Not on. And Bruce Chan? I see him, he's on. Bruce? Please unmute your mics.
Yes, hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, please state your name.
Excellent. Hello, my name is Bruce Chan, and I am the Chair of the Bloomfield Development Corporation's Property and Planning Committee. And I'm here today to speak in favor of the inclusionary zoning legislation for Bloomfield and Polish Hill. And while we have mainly been speaking about how inclusionary zoning will help future developments, I do want to talk today about those who have already been driven out of Bloomfield because of this unaffordability. I personally have had neighbors, friends, and colleagues who originally moved to Bloomfield because of the walkability, the tight-knit community, and affordability. However, they have been forced to move in the past years, mainly relocating outside of the city in boroughs like Etna, Shaler, and Millville. Tools like inclusionary zoning is just one way we can hope to keep those current Pittsburgh residents and neighbors, keeping that talent, diversity, and friendship in our city and neighborhood. So I urge city council today to approve this new inclusionary zoning legislation to not only ensure that Pittsburgh has affordable units for not only to provide for new future neighbors, but also to lure back those we have already lost. Additionally, I hope that we can expand this effective tool citywide. Bloomfield and Polish Hill are privileged to have engaged community advocates and resources. But many neighborhoods, actually those which could benefit the most from inclusionary zoning, aren't as well-resourced. Not many working-class Pittsburghers can take time off in the middle of the day to attend the numerous meetings at Planning Commission and City Council to fight like Lawrenceville, Bloomfield, and Polish Hill have. So I encourage city council to proactively give neighborhoods the tools like inclusionary zoning to ensure affordable and responsible developments for all Pittsburghers. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And our last registered speaker is Carmen Brown. Carmen? See, she's on. Carmen, please unmute your mic. Carmen Brown. Carmen, your mic is muted. Last time.
Okay. Yeah, well, I was trying to unmute it, but I missed the, what it was, I think, star six. But anyway, I wanted to talk a little bit about the, just to ask some questions about these. I was looking at the footage of the mass shooting. And I just want this for the record.
Please state your name.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, please state your name and neighborhood for the record, please.
Okay, yes. Okay, yes, Carmen Brown, East Liberty. Let me just talk a little bit about this. I wanted to ask some questions and just put it on the record. And after I reviewed the footage of the mass shooting, these are the questions that I have. Okay, the police officer was parked for 90 minutes before the shooting. Why didn't the officer do an observation in the area? Why was there only one exit? What happened to the body cam? What happened to the officers enforcing the noise ordinance by shutting the party down, especially when the officers smelled weed and alcohol? Why didn't the officers ask for the person who answered the door to show ID? If the police was diligent in their observation, it would have been a different outcome, and lives could have been saved. Teresa Kell, I'm asking you to request the body cams to show the public so we can see exactly what happened. We can see exactly who was at the door when they supposedly, you know, went to, and they talked to somebody there. They said it was the, it was supposed to be the person who owns the place. So also, you know, we would like to see that. And, 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 I mean, because this is ridiculous. And, and it just don't seem right, this doesn't sound right from the reports and the things that they're saying. And I've been following this, and about 15 to 50 of us have been following this. But also, I say this again, is that this shows the incompetence of our police administration and the patrol officers. I mean, you keep blaming it on the community, and I can get into a whole conversation about that. You keep blaming it on the parents, and I, I have a whole conversation about it as well. But, but the public safety has to take a responsibility as well. You know, when there's, when there's things going on, when there's things that need to be investigated, they need to investigate it. Because, but I see, I see that a lot of towns with these patrol officers, you know, they're doing more harm than good. And in this case, they had an opportunity to observe the scene. There were children outside before the shooting ever started, before they scattered. So where was this officer at? What was going on with this officer? Was he still at the, was he still at the scene? There's a lot of questions to this, and we're not going to let this go. Because again, you know, again, they have a job to do, they have a responsibility. And if there was a car there, again, there's a noise ordinance that you all have. They should have shut it down. And when they would have done that again, maybe lives would have been.
Thank you. Any further speakers wishing to address city council? Please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood, please. Thank you.
First of all, my name is Hank Commodore.
Good morning.
Good morning. Our program says, Help the Youth, Youth Program. And I've spoke to you as many times. God loves all people. It says, Get on board with love and kindness. All lives matter to do the right thing. When you do the right thing, that's what counts right there. We're having a thing for Zone 28 on the, on the May 15th, on 4 to 7 on a Sunday, and it's free. We're honoring all the healthcare workers, because they are the true heroes. When you can operate on somebody, knowing that they committed murder, we're going to have a trial. What's more godly than that? We gotta let these kids see that there's true heroes here. That they gotta step up to the plate and do the right thing. When you do the right thing, you don't have any problems. I've raised over 300 kids in the juvenile system that lives with me. All different nationalities. Environment changes people. It says right here, I went to council to see this book right here. It says, Be the Change. We need to change up on this violence. Let them know that there is a God. Let them know that we're all in this together. And when they have, when you come to this program that we have, we're going to have all the little kids together wearing these shirts that says, Get on Board with Love. I came out with these shirts. My brother got murdered in 1994. Shot in the back, cold-blooded murder. But you don't fight violence with violence. You fight violence with faith, wisdom, and love for the Holy Spirit. And these shirts say, Get on Board with Love. It says, Stop the Violence with Wisdom, with the Sunshine and on all the continents. And we all walking together as one. And it says on the sleeve, All Lives Matter to Do the Right Thing. And the words are with blood on it, because we're all one in the blood all over the world. We all have the same DNA. And we have to instill that in the kids and families all over. They're part of that. When I look at these guys up here today, bringing their kids to school to do the right thing, that's what it's all about. That's the true meaning of love and kindness. When we all come out together and the kids see the council from all over come together. We had one before, Councilman Burgess was there. People from Allegheny County, Westmoreland County, all of them together. Police officers with their kids and stuff, all of us together as one. That's what we need to show these kids. And the media needs to be out there and see this. We've been doing this for years, and it needs to be shown out there. Get the TV involved. That's what needs to be done.
Thank you.
With love and kindness. I hope you guys will look through this book right here.
Thank you.
Which is all you need to do and be there.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, your wife. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Seeing no further speakers, move on to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. Thank you, Councilman.
Each one of them. I want them to take a look at that. Each one of them, I want them to take a look at that.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 264, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Authorize the Pennsylvania Resources Council for Providing Electronic Waste Collection and Recycling Services for City Residents and Further Providing for an Agreement in Expenditures Not to Exceed $315,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Hope you're feeling better.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 265, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement with the URA for the Administration of Certain Projects and Programs and Providing for the Payment of Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $1,237,000.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Madam President. No new papers.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Councilman O'Connor for Councilman Lavelle.
I'm here, Madam President.
Oh, he's on. I didn't realize. I apologize, Councilman.
No worries.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 266, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Allegheny County Health Department for the United States Environmental Protection Agency's 2021 Targeted Airshed Grant to Purchase Five Battery Electric Refused Trucks and Electric Charging Infrastructure and Further Providing for Expenditures Not to Exceed $2,800,000. Bill Number 267, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with the Hines Endowments for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Fund in the Amount of $27,336 for Leadership Training Through a Partnership with the Pittsburgh Futures.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one resolution and one ordinance. Take the ordinance first, please. Thank you.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 268, Resolution, you said the ordinance first?
The ordinance first.
Bill 270, Ordinance Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title VII Business License in Article VII Business Licenses by Creating a New Chapter 768 Accessory Term Rentals.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to take a, take a moment. Uh, I think now would be appropriate to address-
We'll do that in motions and resolutions. Can you just make the motion now? Okay.
Well. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to waive the rule so that the, this bill was standing, will go to our Standing Committee tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilman. And second, any discussion?
Yeah.
Councilman, did you want to say something now?
Yeah, I wanted to speak to the bill, but primarily first, I want to just address how we got to this point. So everyone's aware, it's been happening over the past few weeks in the, in the, well, past months, few weeks in the city of Pittsburgh. Recent increase in, in violence, recent on the north side. You know, in the, in the neighborhood of East Duxton, it was just very troubling and very deeply tragic event that, that happened. You know, just envisioning a moment where people feel the need to jump out the window because of the violence that's occurring is just deeply troubling. And I think that the people that were there, affected, will, will grapple with that for quite some time, for the rest of their life, most likely. And I just want to take a moment to talk about that. I think that, you know, there's gonna be several community gatherings, folks surround this event that happened on the north side. And I also want to make sure that the, the, the local community where this took place, you know, has assurance of, that, you know, like tonight wouldn't happen tomorrow. You know, they were trying to still understand the details of the event. And I like, you know, for that to be, you know, front and center in a community meeting. So I'm organizing that as well for the local community. And they've been extremely helpful in terms of anything that they know. You know, working with public safety so that, so that we have all the information. So I just want to commend the community of East, East Duxton for, for stepping up and, and, and trying to be a real, a real partner to figure out everything that occurred. I want to thank everyone that showed up on the scene, you know, after to, to address the situation. And I, you know, I'm gonna get to talking to the bill, but I just want to also say that, you know, with the Stop the Violence Fund, recently I've been going, you know, because the bill is, I mean, by no means do I think that the bill is gonna address violent situations. I mean, I just want to make that clear, you know. But in council, and what we can do, and what, what you have been doing, and I think all the, all other council people here, in some capacity, has thought, how can we regulate short-term rentals? And so that was a moment that came together here in the past 48 hours where we've been working jointly together to bring the best bill forward. And, you know, I motioned to make the rule, to waive the rule to get it to Standing Committee so we can start talking about this, because I think it's important that we address this. I think if people would, you know, you know, here have been, you know, the community's been asking for it. So I think we're, we're responding to the community as well here. So, but that said, you know, no way, shape, or form, I think that this is, you know, the, the pinnacle moment that's gonna change everything. This is, you know, one of many steps. I think that, um, you know, there needs to be accountability here. But in terms of stopping the, stopping the violence, and, and, you know, we have a fund that's supposed to speak directly to this. Um, that's where we fund outreach workers, that's where we fund off the community health and safety staff. We need to continue to have real conversations with high school students, youth. Uh, I mean, recently I went to Perry High School and spoke with high school students, and it was very impactful just to understand, if you had to spend the money to stop the violence, how would you spend it? I mean, that's the question we should be asking. And so I'm gonna continue to ask, ask that question and have a real comprehensive strategy to move forward so that we can spend the money appropriately and to strengthen what we already have been funding. Uh, we need to know that, you know, if we do have outreach, outreach workers going and talking to family of victims that, you know, we, we have, they're given the full amount of resources that they, that they can, that we're looking into. Uh, we can strengthen those relationships and really understand just a very, a very robust way of, of tackling the issue. So I want to thank Council President for, for, and also Councilwoman Gross for working over the past 48 hours to, to figure something out initially that we can do. So I'm looking forward to the conversation tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Kraus.
Thank you. I have comment, but I'll save mine for emergency resolutions. I will support moving the bill forward, but save additional comments for emergency.
Thank you. And I'll save my comments too for motions and resolutions.
Um, thank you. I, I'd like to be added as a sponsor of the bill.
Oh, great, thank you.
Would you let me?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Glad to have you, thank you. Any other members want to join?
Oh, joy.
Councilman Burgess, Councilman Kra- uh, O'Connor. Okay. Thank you.
I would as well, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Lavelle. Thank you. And, and we're gonna address some other things, so I think make other members feel some, feel comfortable with their sponsorship too. Um, any other members? Seeing no further members, all in favor of the motion to waive rule? As the council will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The bill appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you. And I have one resolution.
Council President Kell Smith also presents Bill Number 268, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Oriole Drive be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Do we need a, what is the motion? Red receiving file or no motion? No motion. Okay, thank you. Just a committee. Okay, thank you.
It's gonna move through committee. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our next order of business is unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is Report to Committee for Final Action. And we'll begin with Councilman Arden Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 261, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for April 13, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 196, Resolution Authorizing The Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Core Business Technologies in the Amount of $2,062.50 for Integration with the CSS Tax System. Bill Number 234, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Accept a Donation From the 14th Ward Youth Baseball Association of a Batting Cage System in Mellon Park, Valued at $9,915.83. Bill Number 240, Resolution Establishing a Pittsburgh City School District Partnership.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilman O'Connor?
All right, briefly, I did check the city league records, and 14th Ward has won the most championships. I, I know we had that debate last, but that's, I just want that on record, so thank you.
And Councilman O'Connor coached for them.
My sons played for them.
And your sons played for, oh, so there you go. That's, and my husband coached against him, so I think he really helped you the most. Anything else from members? Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Okay. You've heard the reading in the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? We did that part. The bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills? But I, when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. But the clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Joe O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Because the bills haven't received, the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And thank you to the 14th Ward for their donation. And Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Who's that?
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 262, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for April 13, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1707, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Article One, Section 90203, zoning map, and amending Article Three, Overlay Zoning District, Chapter 907, Development Overlay District 90704A, to expand the boundaries of the Inclusionary Overlay District.
You've heard the reading in the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilwoman Gross.
Appreciate it. I want to thank council for unanimously recommending a positive recommendation last week. Um, and we've discussed inclusionary zoning many times. Um, it has been an effective tool in Lawrenceville, where it's created about 40 new units of affordable housing. Um, and Bloomfield and Polish Hill have been organizing and having these conversations in support of inclusionary zoning now for years. I've attended many, well-attended, public meetings about affordability pressure in both Polish Hill and Bloomfield, and the neighborhoods are united in their desire to make sure that they do all of the things that they can do to ensure that there are some affordable places to live in the neighborhood. As you heard in public testimony, they continue, each of these neighborhoods continues to lose neighbors due to rising housing prices. Um, and while we see people moving into these neighborhoods, as we heard from public comment, we're losing our citizens. And many are, are moving outside of the city because they cannot find affordable housing inside the city. So these, these price pressures that first, you know, years ago seemed to only be in Lawrenceville, or maybe the district district, is really increasing across neighborhoods. And I've had conversations with many council members who are seeing prices rise in their own district. So I want to congratulate Bloomfield Development Corporation and Polish Hill Civic Association, and of course, the early leadership of Florenceville Corporation, Lawrenceville United, and all of their partner organizations that have helped kind of create the first overlay district in Lawrenceville. Um, and then congratulate the, the neighbors and citizens of, of Bloomfield and Polish Hill for advocating for the expansion of inclusionary zoning. And I probably, uh, hope that council will, will positively, will approve it finally today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members, Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate you, Councilwoman Gross. I, you know, since the time I've arrived, a little over four years ago, I know you've been working on it, and probably long before that. I'll admit, I didn't know much about it when I came in. Now I'm fully versed on it. And it must be very gratifying to see dozens and dozens of it actually on paper, and, you know, affordable housing that you've created. So congratulation on the expansion and keep up the good work. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? I just want to congratulate you also, Councilwoman. I know how hard you worked for this and how hard you fought for this and for your communities. So I just want to congratulate you on your work for this. Although I don't know that this is the answer for all the city of Pittsburgh, especially in my district. We're trying to incentivize development, so I don't know that's perfect for my area, but I know it's what your area needed, and I know you know what your area needs. So thank you for your work on this. The bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, passage of it. I, when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. But the clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Joe O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills haven't received, the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilwoman Deb Gross, our last committee of the day on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 263, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for April 13, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 444, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 4808 Baum Boulevard in the 8th Ward. Bill Number 232, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to Acknowledge and Consent to a Partial Assignment and Assumption Agreement between, between the Pennsylvania American Water and the Bureau of Brentwood related to a December 1st, 1949 service area agreement between Al Cessan, the Bureau of Brentwood, and the City of Pittsburgh. Pennsylvania American Water seeks to purchase and operate the Bureau of Brentwood's wastewater collection system. Bill Number 233, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at 807 Ridge Avenue at the parcel number 8E185.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of it. I, when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. But the clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Joe O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Bills haven't received, the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And, and I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold an executive session with the Law Department, Department of Law. Tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., council will hold their standing, our Standing Committees Meeting. Speaker registration closes at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. Also, Wednesday at 2:30 p.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 190 as it relates to the Tito House Historic Designation. Speaker registration closes at 12:30 p.m. on Wednesday afternoon. This Saturday, April 23rd, at 12:00 p.m. at the South Wing Reading Room on the second floor of the main library in Oakland, there will be a in-person-only public briefing by the Reapportionment Advisory Committee on the Proposed Repportionment District Maps. Speaker registration closes at Friday, April 22nd, at 4:00 p.m. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the City Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138, or email cityclerks@pittsburghpa.gov. So anything from members? Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm gonna try to make some sense of the comments that I wish to make regarding the events of the past weekend. I have a number of things written down here. I'm gonna try to present them in some kind of a cohesive order. But two weeks ago yesterday, myself, Bob Charlin, my chief of staff, Barbara Rudiak, who's president of the Southside Community Council, and Allison Hardin, who is our nighttime economy coordinator, would have attended, but had some family health issues and could not be there. But we attended once again a responsible hospitality conference in Washington, DC. Uh, and the topic of conversation really began that weekend to talk about how social industry reinvents itself after global pandemic. But as the fates would have it, Friday night, there was a mass shooting that took place in Sacramento, and the tone of the conference took a drastic turn. Uh, and so what we listened to from city after city after city after city across the United States, and even other nations that had been represented there, was the fear and frustration of really every major city of the possibility of mass shooting taking place in social venues. And I use the term "social venues" because there is, as, try as I may, for the last 15 years have been trying to get us as a city to understand that a city operates well past 9:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday, that there is a whole second that- that there is a whole second economy that takes place in the evenings and on weekends. And the urgency by which we need to begin taking that seriously and to provide resources so as to be able to, hate to use the word regulate, but to, to, to support, I'll use the term to support. And I got a call from Mayor Gani that Saturday because we had had a shooting on the south side outside of Walker's Pub that had become a huge point of conversation on social media. There was a confrontation outside of Walker's Pub, two young men. One had asked the other one for a ride home. He did not want to ride. The person requesting a ride home didn't want to ride him home, so he shot him. Solution, right? And so I got a call from the mayor. We talked at length about gun violence and also talked to Deputy Mayor Jake Pollock. And we talked that day as well too about the, the, this, you know, cancer, if you will, on the culture that has, that is known as gun violence. And then we had the mass shooting in Sacramento and the conversation changed. And so spoke with the mayor again, spoke at length on Monday when I returned with Deputy Mayor Jake Pollock, trying to offer what many major cities are considering as forms of solution to solve or to at least begin to address the issue of gun violence within social venues. And we have continued to stay in touch, I should say. And through the events of this past weekend, I, like many members of council, spent all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and all day Monday, and I never left the phone. I'm sure Councilman Wilson had at least that similar of an experience and, and I'm sure even more heightened than mine. But I had an opportunity to talk to a number of people about my thoughts about how we begin to grapple with the situation of, of gun violence, especially as it relates to evening and social venues. And one of the conversations that I had with Deputy Mayor Pollock and Mayor Gani was that there has to be a separation of consideration for the potential for mass shooting. And not to minimize any loss of life is tragic on all fronts. And at the same time, there are certain venues within the city that make it prime and ripe for mass shooting. And I spoke, of course, about the South Side Flats. And I compared it to the situation that happened in Sacramento. You have public rights away that are already crowded with thousands of people. And I do not exaggerate when I say thousands of people. Also, under state law, we dictate that every alcohol licensed venue has to vacate at exactly two PM. So we force another two or three thousand people into the streets that are already overcrowded. People are largely intoxicated. This is what happened in Sacramento. Fights begin to break out. Fights lead to guns being pulled. Guns being pulled lead to people being shot. And, and I stressed my grave, grave concern that we were just moments away from mass shooting in social venues here in the city of Pittsburgh. And within two weeks, we have a mass shooting that took place this weekend that we all know about. A couple of thoughts that I have about what happened over the weekend. I appreciate the, the emphasis on the platform that provided opportunity for the violence to take place. And I will, and am supportive of regulation of short-term rental property as it relates, especially to Airbnb. But I do want to caution us just briefly that we are minutes away from launching the rental registry, which is fourteen years in the making. And that launches in about four weeks, maybe five weeks. And I want us just to be mindful that we take into consideration what we've already passed and make certain that we are not disrupting anything that could possibly happen with short, or I'm sorry, happen with our rental registry. And I also want to emphasize that in the same location where this mass shooting took place, there was a family on the first floor that was using it responsibly. They had come from the Carolinas. I believe they had been here a week. And they had come to participate in the city, spend money, you know, engage in whatever they might have engaged in while they were here. Luckily, they had the, the, the sense to leave when they saw how bad the situation really had gotten. And they left and thank God they were not there. But I want us to be mindful also that there are some benefits that come. And, and just to be mindful of the benefits, especially at a time when an industry is trying to reinvent itself from global pandemic. Having said that, I invited Bob Charlin, my chief of staff, to come out. And I'm going to invite him to come to the table tomorrow when we have the discussion. And I want him to talk specifically about Airbnb's Neighborhood Support Team, which is an abysmal joke. If you have issues around parties that are taking place or trash that isn't being managed or issues around parking, Airbnb does provide opportunity from what they call a Neighborhood Support Team, which is absolutely impossible to get through and to get any kind of satisfaction in any way, shape, or form. So I would very much like to, to discuss that and address how and why Airbnb operates that way. And they need to have a much, much stronger commitment to the way they manage the properties that they use for short-term rental care. And I think they've learned, I hope they've learned a very valuable lesson this weekend. History dictates they probably haven't and probably won't. But I do appreciate the willingness that they do want to come to the table and help to discuss. But it's a, it's a day late and a dollar short because now lives are lost. And not the first time. It was two years ago, two people lost lives in an Airbnb event in the Hill District, I believe in Councilman Lavelle's District. But the, 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 a very similar situation happened Friday night on Carson Street, which was not publicized because there was not violence associated with it. But my phone started ringing very early Saturday morning because there is a, a landlord, we all know, I'm not going to name name here, but we all know, because I don't have definitive information that it is definitely connected to this property. But we have every reason to believe that it is, where the same kind of an event was held. There were estimates of two hundred to two hundred and fifty underage kids in the building. It spilled out onto Carson Street. They closed the street. Police did engage. They dispersed the crowd. The crowd went through residential neighborhoods or through areas. I got called Saturday morning of people's dissatisfaction that it was loud and boisterous. And, and I also had a neighbor that found a gun that was hidden in their bushes. And so I bring that up to say that I want us to be mindful that acts of violence and acts of mass shootings are not limited to location, that we, each and every one of us, can fall victim at a moment's notice to, to gun violence. On Easter Sunday, at a store in the twenty-one hundred block of Wharton Street in the south side, there was a shooting. It largely went unreported. It was Easter Sunday afternoon. Two actors were inside the store. Two actors came inside the store. I believe they had some kind of beef that needed to be settled. Guns came out, shots were fired, the windows were shot out. All four actors escaped. They have not been apprehended. But it almost went like a blip on the radar screen because this is the world that we're living in today. And so I'd really like to talk a little bit about the world that we're living in today. That what, what scares me no end and what I hope we, not just as a council, but as planners, managers, and administrators of the city, come to understand that what I believe, we are in at least a second generation, if not a third generation that we have raised that believes that a handgun is part of the accoutrementage of the day and holds no different importance than carrying a cellphone that day. And we hear time and time and time again of young people. I spoke with the district attorney's office at length this morning. And he had called, not the DA, but Deputy DA, had called to say that what they hear time and time again is that young people, I suspect the councilman will probably verify this, that young people are arming themselves because everybody else is armed and they feel they need to be armed for their own safety. And how and why we, we bear responsibility here as the adults in the room, how we have raised two to maybe a third generation now of young people that truly believe that the, you know, the completion of the day is to grab the cellphone and make sure that you have a gun in your presence when you walk out the door, just boggles my mind. And anyone who wants to paint this as strictly a black American problem is living with their head in the sand because it is not. It is a generational problem, as I like to call it. We had reports and anyone who follows national news will see that spring break this year in cities across Florida and California, which are largely populated by young, white, affluent, well-educated young people, showed up en masse this year at spring break with weapons, primarily semi-automatic weapons. And those weapons were seized by law enforcement by the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds. So I, I'd like to kind of touch on Carmen Brown's remarks when she called in today. One of my first reactions was there was an opportunity for police officers to intervene when they showed up the first time. However, I, I want, I would like to temper my remarks with, are we training police officers appropriately to understand what kinds of regulations may already be on the books and what power they actually have to intervene? What we have begged through two generations and now into two administrations and now into a third, to have dedicated, purposefully trained police officers in nightlife, social venues that understand the complexities of nighttime, social venues. And that they can, dedicated teams can be trained is in things like sound ordinances, in occupancy, as well as de-escalation. But it's so easy for us just to throw everything into a police officer's lap and say, because we have failed to plan and manage and administrate in our role, we'll hand it off to you and you just need to fix it. Well, I'm going to call BS on that because that is not the way to do it. We have begged, and I am not exaggerating, we have begged through two administrations and now briefly into a third, to have nighttime inspectors out on a regular basis. If we had building inspectors that were funded and were out and understood the complexities of nighttime, social venues, perhaps an officer would have been able to call an inspector, to ask an inspector to intervene, that inspector would have understood they were clearly over occupancy, that they didn't have the right to be in there to begin with, and perhaps a couple of lives could have been saved. I, I recall when I first came into office, it's now fifteen years, and I couldn't have been here maybe six months. And I had a meeting with director level people who are, have not been with the city for many, many, many years, but they were director level. And I had asked for a meeting in about my first six months of being here to talk about how cities operate twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five and that city services are provided Monday through Friday, nine to five. And I pled my case of the importance of understanding that my week begins Friday and sometimes even Thursday. And it used to end Saturday, but now it ends Monday because it's Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night. And so I tried to, to get these directors to understand the complexity of the problems that I was facing and to get support. And what I got in return, and I've told this story a million times in private, but I've never told this story in public. This director did not call me councilman. This director did not call me Mr. Kraus. This council, or this director did not call me Bruce. He called me pal. And he said to me, pal, if it happens after three o'clock on a Friday and before seven o'clock on a Monday, you're on your own. This meeting's over, and got up and walked out of the room. And for fifteen years, I've crawled across broken glass and begged, begged for intervention of, of city leadership to understand the complexities of a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five city that operates that way and this entire second, second economy that we have, that we have learned through global pandemic how very important this industry is of socialization and how we should protect and nurture the industry. When, when the pandemic worlds were lifted last summer, and many of you know this, I truly believed that we had reached some level of understanding of how important food and beverage and entertainment and social venues were to the health and well-being of the city and the, the revenues that they provide. And that somehow this was going to be a transformational moment. And we were going to embrace the industry at the end of global pandemic and say, we understand our responsibility and we are going to embrace this industry and we are going to make certain that it thrive, not only survives but thrives. And what the hell happened? Last summer, it went off the rails. My phone blew up every minute of every day last summer as we tried to grapple with this onslaught of gun violence, massive crowds that seem to, we seem to have a generation that's participating in, in these venues that don't believe life has longevity, that we're living only for this moment in time. And what I do and how I react right now is all that matters. And, and, and I truly hope that we, we had come to understand and we didn't. And so when I first spoke with Mayor Gani and Deputy Mayor Pollock at length, I said, this is not the end. What we are experiencing at Walker's Pub, what we are experiencing in the South Side Flats, what Sacramento is experiencing, Milwaukee, and now again on the north side in Councilman Wilson's district, we have mass shooting. This is just the beginning of the long, hot summer ahead. And if we think that this is done, we're living with our heads in the sand. This is just the start of it. So while I applaud the council president, Councilman Wilson for the actions that they're taking, which I support and I'm happy to work closely with them on the regulation of short-term rental, the, the, the genie is out of the bottle. And this is a, a massive, massive call to action. I don't want to hear thoughts. I don't want to hear prayers. I don't want to hear no more, never again. I want to hear a concrete substantive strategy that helps us to understand that this, this cancerous surge of gun violence that is upon not just us, but this nation as a whole and what the hell we are going to do about it. Those are my comments. They were very long, but I, and I genuinely appreciate members for allowing me to, 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 to put that on the record. But I'll end by saying that I'm here to help. And whatever we can do collectively, we're, we're being called to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Kraus. Um, I, I really just want to start with recognizing, Councilman Wilson, your leadership over the past weekend with that tragedy in your district. Came home to me only a few weeks ago. And, you know, sometimes I know you feel helpless about the whole thing. It's, it's, it's a hard thing to deal with. Only too commonplace for Councilman Kraus and, 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 you know, Councilman. and, 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 you know, Councilman Burgess, unfortunately. We'd all like to think that the gun laws, we could, you know, have an impact there and get guns off the street. Doesn't seem real likely to happen soon, I will say, you know, with the state legislature and the way it's made up. I am happy and grateful for, you know, Stop the Violence Fund that we funded in Cornell Jones. To me, that was very impactful, just to have somebody out there to talk to people was very helpful. I also want to recognize the brave men and women that wear the badge, you know. Comes home to you and it really realize the danger in this job when you're called out to an incident like Mr. Wilson had the other night with 90-plus shots fired. And, you know, they, again, rushing into danger while others are rushing out. So I want to thank our Pittsburgh Police and Chief Schuber for everything he's doing. He's got his hands full, I know. I agree with you, Councilman Kraus. I think it's a generational problem as much as anything. I've had the opportunity to get into the Pittsburgh Public Schools with my, with my board member, Billy Gallagher. I think you need to start hitting kids and talking to kids at seven, eight, nine years old at this point. So I'm there to help, anything I can do. You know, I know that our hearts in the right spot and I hope we can make an impact over the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Reverend Burgess?
I try. Very thoughtful. Very deliberate. When I talk about this issue. Everyone knows here and I've spent the last 20 years of my life dedicated to this issue. Recently, of course, Councilman Lovell and I have shared our ideas in a tangible way to the administration and we hope some part of our ideas perhaps will have resonance with them. I grieve for every single victim of gun violence. Every single victim. They are not numbers. They are not groups. They are people. Every child, every adult, whether it be by suicide, whether it be by homicide, whether it be about mass shootings. When the tree of life happened, I went there and did little I could to just be of comfort. It was awful, traumatic and should have never happened. And I still pray for those families. The victims over the weekend, Easter Sunday morning, some of us were celebrating Jesus Christ and what it means in our lives, and then we are reminded of the ugly side of When people say though, that this is a generational problem, I perhaps want to suggest what I There are two things that are causing this violence, two foundational things that are the foundation of it. There are situational that cause immediate violence, but there are two foundational problems. One is we have children who are growing up traumatized. COVID-19 racism has traumatized these children. They are, they are, they are growing up, some of them not in two-parent households, not in economically advanced, they're growing up in, and so they themselves have been traumatized by life, number one. And second of all, because of racism, institutional racism, especially in Pittsburgh, they are growing up hopeless. They are growing up in communities where banks don't lend to them. They are growing up in communities that have no food, no drugstores, no grocery stores, no clothing. This is Homewood. Homewood has no drugstores, no grocery stores, no clothing stores, no sit-down restaurants, and only one gas station at the end of, on the last possible place in Homewood. They are growing up poor and historically disadvantaged for hundreds of years, or at least scores of years. And so if you took a kid from Brookline Beachview and you put them in this environment that some say is worse than places in South Africa, what do you think that kid's going to be? Being bullied and hurt and traumatized, having no hope? Then you take and you flood it with guns because I, we have a country, Doc Rivers said it better than I could say it. We have a country that we love. We have a country that doesn't love us. And so we have these Republicans who allow guns to flow into the nation unchecked, knowing it will end in the death of all people, but disproportionate, but make no mistake, and let's be honest, every death is important. I say that, but it is not equal. We don't share this burden equally. Gun violence disproportionately affects African-Americans disproportionately by overwhelming numbers. It is disproportionately an urban problem that's concentrated in poor communities, right? We know this. We know that you are 10 times more likely, blacks are 10 times more likely to be victims of gun violence, 18 more times victims of gun assaults, three times more likely to be shot by the police. It's disproportionately in poor, underserved communities. We know this. I've, since I've been a member of council in my council district, we've had six, 700 die, die in the 14 years I've been a member of council, right? Okay. So if, so it interests me sometimes and we talk about this, right? But we, we don't do anything to, to change the segregated communities we live in. We live in them without any, without, 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 we don't, we don't spend our time trying to desegregate our communities. We don't spend our time making sure that these kids have opportunities, real opportunities to get out of the hood, right? We don't do that. We let their communities rot, not council. We've done what we could. The city's done what we could. We don't have enough money to do it, right? We need the private sector to come in and rebuild these communities. We know that. We need, we need Republicans to stop the flow of guns. We know that. So what then do we do? I don't disagree with Councilman Kraus. I don't disagree with anybody who wants to stop violence. We, we have to make a priority for everybody. Whatever, whatever the place is, if it's, if it's places of hospitality, let's do that. So we know that, we know how to do this, actually. We know, we have, we have the resources to do it. It takes a comprehensive, coordinated effect. More police officers will not stop shooting. Simply arresting people will not stop shooting. What you have to do is coordinate it, right? You have to, you have to deal with the long-term effects, which is long-term problems, which is rebuilding these communities and giving these kids hope and changing their schools and keep them from being beaten up and dealing with their trauma and giving them therapy. We got to do that on the left-hand side, right, right, right? We know this. We had to have the intervention workers, right? We know that on the street, right? And we have to have smart policing that does not sweep in a broad stroke, but actually targets the people who are most likely to do violence and, and we know that too, and tell them, look, we don't want to do this, but if you don't stop this lifestyle, then these are the consequences. We, we actually know how to do it. But the problem is, we are, we are a small part of this. When the national government will not help us, where the state government will not help us because they don't love black and brown people, I'm going to be honest about this, right? When they say make America great again, what they're really saying is make, make America a place where black people are silent, segregated and oppressed. They don't love us. They don't care about us. That's why they allow our communities to rot. Now, we have done, this council has done almost everything we can. I know I've done everything I know to do. And yet there's always more to do. You know, we have to do call-ins again. We have to do custom notifications. We got away from that. We need to get back to that in terms of deterrent model, and I hope that I'm encouraging us to do that. Hopefully we'll get back to some of those things that we stopped under the previous administration. We'll get back to doing them. We have more money now to spend than ever before. We have to spend it wisely. But we are, we do not, this problem is part and parcel of the institutional racism of this country. It, it, you can't, you don't, 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 don't. If you start killing people in Shadyside on a regular basis, if you start killing people in Mount Lebanon on a regular basis, if you start killing people in Upper St. Clair on a regular basis, this problem would stop. The reason it doesn't stop is because it disproportionately affects brown and black people in democratically controlled urban neighborhoods. And those people, those Republicans primarily who don't love us, they don't hate us, they just don't love us. They used to hate us. Their daddies hated us, right? Their daddies and granddaddies hated us, right? They, they, they owned slaves and they segregated us. They hated us. They don't hate us. They just don't love us. They're indifferent. It's now not white hatreds of black people and brown people. It's white indifference. They don't care. And they, they, oh my God, there's a shooting. And they drive home to their lily-white neighborhoods. They drive home to their, their wealth without any commitment to rebuilding black communities where the heart of black people live. And if you go and you look at these shootings and you look at these shooters in Pittsburgh, since I've been on council, and you look at their victims, they primarily come from black and brown neighborhoods and they're primarily black and brown people who are growing up in places that are worse than third world countries in this city. How in the world do we call ourselves the most livable city in America at the same place where this is the worst place for African-Americans to live in the world, in the city, in the country? This is the worst place to be an African-American. And we, not the council and not the city, but the greater Pittsburgh community, the larger community, the larger for-profit institutions, don't put money, don't help us, don't give us money. Our school, the white flight out of the schools, our kids can't read, they can't read. I applaud having the men in here, but our kids can't read, they can't do math, they're following standardized testing. And we're all acting like this is okay. It's not okay. And we're not doing the things that we know works. We know how to do this. We know how, we know our kids got to go beyond school. We, they had to do three or four hours more of homework every day if they're going to ever catch up. The pandemic meant that these children are not, they're not just behind like they were. These kids are three, four grade levels behind. They're never going to catch up unless there's this great emphasis and we're acting like this is normal. The pandemic has created the recipe of this perfect moment of absolute chaos. We have kids who are, who are more traumatized than they've ever had before as the principals. They're absolutely hyperactive. There's less resources to deal with the kids. There's less counseling and therapy to deal with these kids. And they're going into communities where the pandemic has destroyed the little, the little job, the little businesses we had have all died. The black businesses have died during the pandemic. Had almost 50% of all black businesses have died during the pandemic. And so now the community is worse after the pandemic. The kids are worse during pandemic. And the white Republicans, sorry, mostly white Republicans, it's not racial, but it is, they are flooding the guns with their flood and we are, we have the highest gun sales than ever before. Guns are everywhere, right? Not just guns, guns with 30, you know, 30 shots and, and sub, and, and automated guns. It's the work, this is nuts. I'm a man of faith. So we're going to have this conversation. I might as well speak the truth. Number one, the Bible says, if my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray, seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, I will hear from heaven, I will forgive their sins, I will heal their land. So first of all, we got to pray, those of us who believe in the, I believe, I'm, I'm here today because my mama prayed for me. When I was in the street trying to party and clubbing and doing wrong, my mama was praying for me. She prayed me into, into, into salvation and into safety. So there's a place for that. There's a place for prayer. We got to do that, right? We know to do that. And then we need to sit down, those of us as much as we can, and establish a, in a concentrated, comprehensive model where we're using every available resource, where we are together, where I agree with, with Mr. Kraus. We have to, we have to do the nighttime stuff, right? Because that, that, that's a place, right? And we have to do the Airbnbs and that's a place. And we have to do the, the lobby for, you know, stricter gun laws. We get, that's a place. And we got to do the, the, the Stop the Violence Fund, that's a place. And we got to do the intervention, that's a place. But we have to do it together on the same page, using all the rain resources and the police and the community organizations must all do this in a comprehensive way. If, if, if these events don't tell us that we got to do this together and we got to rebuild communities and we got to create businesses and we can, we can do it, we can do this. It will cost us some money. We can, we can rebuild these communities? Of course we can. We, we, they're going to rebuild, when, when the war is over, they will rebuild Ukraine. They'll rebuild Ukraine. We, we know that. When, when this is over, trust me, you'll see the international money to rebuild Ukraine. We have the resources to rebuild Homewood. We have the money to do it. It's not a question of money. It's a question, do we love black and brown people? That's really the question. And if we love, and America often doesn't love us, if America loves us, it will put its resources behind us. And when you have hope, you don't shoot. So I'm, I'm going to work with everybody, administration, I have been quietly, I'm quietly, hopefully, working with them. I'm working with council, I'm working with community groups. But, but these kids, these kids aren't bad. They're growing up where they're traumatized and they're growing up in, in communities that are, that are, that are, that are toxic. And when you have no hope, all you think about is the minor stuff, respect and guns. It's not their fault. They're, they're as much of a victim, they're as much of, they themselves have been victimized and they are victimizing other people. And so we got to get to all this, I'm sorry, it's too much talking, but we got to do all this at once. I've seen this. I've seen this in my family. I saw this, you know? I saw this myself. I've been to the house where the gang kids rap. I've done, I've been there, I've talked to them. It is heartbreaking. It's, it's a national shame, but it will take all of us, and we've been working together. And I'm, I'm a little emotional because it hurts me so much, but we can, we, we, we can do this together. We can help the South Side, we can help the North Side, help Homewood, help the Hill. We can do this together, but it, it will take concentrated, disciplined effort and everybody must play a part. That's too much talking. But I, I just, I, I try not to talk about this stuff anymore unless it's something specific, a program or something we're going to do, because I just can't take it anymore. It's just, it's, it's, it's too much. It's just been too much, much.
Anything else from members?
You have comments to make. I just wanted to ask something briefly, but you have comments.
No, go ahead. Make your comments first.
Well, while I'm sitting here, I get an email from how we know the event on Friday night happened on East Carson Street. Thank God for community people that keep an eye out. This is something that we locally, the district attorney's office, police, nuisance bar, has been tracking these kinds of spaces opening all the time throughout last summer and now into this summer. And this is something that regulation of short-term rental isn't going to address because they don't give a crap about being legit short-term rental, right? They're, they're just out to make a fast buck that weekend and, and, you know, let the chips fall where they may. So this party was, and I'm going to leave names out, but this was clearly, the building is clearly owned by an LLC that is in North for Sales. It is an actor that we've been chasing for months and months and months. That skips up and down the street till they find someone else who's willing to let them in to hold the rave. I don't know if that's the right term. I shouldn't say that. But to hold the event. It was clearly indicated throughout social media platforms, which really concerns me, that are, are we, are, are planners, managers, administrators given the resource need, needed to track these kinds of things. It was advertised to be on Carson. This space has been rented out now multiple times. They even said where you can park and to park in an elementary school parking lot on the, on the South Side. And it clearly orchestrated, clearly organized, and and I, I have an email and and a contact for the LLC that is, is running or leasing, I guess, I'm not sure what I want to say, this property. This is where, and you know, I might be getting a little strong here, but desperate times call for desperate measures. I would, I would hope that there are provisions within law that people that do contract to have these kinds of spaces held, especially for underage kids where alcohol is involved and death occurs, are held for negligent homicide.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other members? So first, I'm going to address the part about the legislation for the short-term rentals. That actually started, actually in 2013, 2015 with Councilwoman Gross. She first looked at it, and then years had gone by. And so then about two months ago, I approached our city solicitor, our council solicitor, I'm sorry, and asked him if he could help me write something for short-term rentals because we were having so many issues across the city of Pittsburgh, and in particular, my district in Mount Washington and Duquesne Heights, where people are purchasing homes, having parties, you know, taking over the streets, all the things that are happening and have been happening in all of our districts. And so he had helped me write. It was actually completed last week. Then this happened with Councilman Wilson, and he called me, and he was working on something as well. And he actually added to the bill to strengthen it a little bit, to make sure that he addressed the concerns for his district too. And I do want to congratulate you. I mean, it was not, you know, a good thing that happened this week. It was horrible, but you have done a great job in the way you've worked with the administration, the way that you are addressing the concerns, the way that you want to continue to address the concerns. I think the community is fortunate to have somebody who was caring, who was so compassionate about them. And I mean, I'd never seen you took somebody, you could tell it was really hurting you personally, that you really wanted to help the community. And for that, I think that they, they are fortunate in having you. It's horrible what happened. It's horrible. How, you know, everything that occurred that day, and I feel terribly for the families, and I offer our condolences to the families of the victims that were, that were killed. But, but also all the victims. I mean, it's just, you know, I, I'm just so sad that anything, anybody went through anything like this. But I think one thing became clear is a lot of these kids went to our, some, a lot of the kids went to some of our schools, and we started getting information from some of our teachers. So it really talks about the importance of our relationship with the school district and making sure that we're working together. But I do want to address the part about Carmen Brown's comments about the police. It's my understanding the police can't even go into a place if they're, if they smell marijuana, or if they smell somebody getting high or something. So I, I don't want to say that our police sort of went through there because I don't, I don't know that that's true or not, something I am trying to find out and get to the bottom of. But if our police officers went in there with the type of people that they would have needed to break up a party of two hundred, that would have been on the media. That would have been in social media. That would have been all over the media. And people would have been criticizing the officers then for breaking up a party with nothing going on. It became an issue when there was a shooting, and that's, and then at that point, the police did come back. They did respond. But I think it's a conversation that we have to have with people. You know, the police are part of the equation. They're part of the answer, just like the community is. But I think that we, none of us really knows the answer and what to do. And I think that we have spent millions of dollars on the, on the nighttime economy, on, you know, anti-violence programs, millions of dollars. And I think everybody's pointing the finger at one another. They're pointing the finger at the police. They're pointing the finger at the parents. People want parents to go to jail. Well, God, I mean, all of our parents probably would have went to jail, you know, for things that we did that they didn't know about. So I just want to say, I think it's time to stop pointing the fingers and let's figure out what we can do collectively. And we are doing some of that with some funding. But I really think the people we're leaving out of this conversation are our kids, and we should really be sitting down with some of them. And I think maybe working with Cornell Jones, who has been amazing. Cornell Jones, Reverend Glenn Grayson have just done, you know, as much as two humans, humans can do across the city to address the violence. But they do work with a lot of young people. So I think we should sit down with them and try to work together with some of the younger people and get to find out what it is. I think maybe some of the money we're using for some community groups may actually be better if we use it for jobs for young people. Maybe better if we employed people and, and helped people and, and helped people that are returning from prison. We know that, we know that this, these are efforts that are already ongoing, but is it enough and what is needed from us? And I hear Reverend, I think we all have some things that we would like to see happen. I also want to see a police class come on. We've talked about that previously. We don't have enough officers to do the police community relationship building that we want to do, that we think is so important because they're responding to calls nonstop. So I, I do think that the administration has been hit with a lot of serious things since they've got into office. But I'm actually confident that they're working on some of these things right now and that they'll come up with. I saw Mayor Gany saying that they will, they have some plans. And so I think that knowing that they're working on and cognizant of what needs to happen gives us faith, but he can't do it alone. We can't expect him to do it alone. We've got to all sit down together. And I think starting with the kids is the way to go. And as far as thoughts and prayers, Madam Clerk and I talked yesterday, thoughts, thoughts and prayers, it was that faith without works is dead. And so I think that, you know, I'm going to pray, but I'm going to pray that we come up with some really good solutions and make sure that we are putting some, some programs forward that are different and help address some of this stuff. But I really think, first things first, I'm going to ask Cornell and Reverend Grayson if they would schedule a meeting with council members and some of the youth in the communities that need our help the most and their families and figure out what we have to do from there. That said, I have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.